Mayor Sagata.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster.
Here.
Commissioner Chavez. Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Jacomel.
Present.
Would you join me for a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you to our Facebook listeners. We have no other visitors tonight. Just announcing that all city offices will be closed November 11th, 2022, which is, I believe, a Friday in observance of Veterans Day. The next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, November 8th at 6:00 p.m. First item, or item five on the agenda, is committee reports from commissioners. Commissioner Chatterley.
The Colfax County Senior Citizens Board met October 13th at 10:00 a.m. at the Rattone Senior Center. All the financials were approved except the summary budget comparison, which had some incorrect numbers, so Monica was going to get some help and try to get that fixed. There was a lot of discussion because the state Aging and Long-Term Services Division is discontinuing funding for the Grab and Go Meal Program in June of 2023. That was established with COVID. And so, Rattone has over 60 people using that service every day and is not sure that those people would actually transition to come back in to eat at the congregate meals. And they're not eligible for the home-delivered meals. And so, they would not probably be getting meals, and they would lose that funding. So, that's kind of a big concern for me, too. I think that's been a great program, and I would love to see the state utilize that. I know they want people to congregate, but there's some good things, too, about being able to have a nice, inexpensive meal. Since July 1st, Rattone has served 2,250 congregate meals, 3,643 grab-and-go meals, and 8,286 home-delivered meals. They've done 847 units of transportation, around 400 hours of tour service, and 677 hours of homemaker services. The other items they discussed were some renovations and repairs at other senior centers and some of the work that was just done on the Rattone Center and some staff training that's going on with financials. Their next meeting will be January 12th at the Rattone Senior Center. And North Central New Mexico Economic Development District is going to meet this Friday at 1:30. And that's all ahead.
Commissioner Jacomel.
Yeah. The Arthur Johnson Memorial Library Board Meeting was not scheduled to meet this month. RPS, Rattone Public Service Company Board of Directors, met on Monday, October 24th, 2022, at 5:30 p.m., which is last night. Robin Osborn, RPS Office Manager and Bookkeeper, reviewed and approved by the Board the financial and statistical information. The Board reviewed and discussed and approved the annual record destruction slash permission to destroy record requirement procedures. The Board also discussed and approved the RPS Resolution 2022-12, disposal of surplus vehicles owned by RPS Company. Also, the Board reviewed and approved the RPS Resolution 2022-13, disposal of obsolete computer equipment owned by RPS. And RPS General Manager Dave Fontino reported to the Board the conditions of approval for their cultural survey on the opposed B-B site. Dave also reported on the power outage, which was far points to bad cable connection. That's all having to do with that.
Mayor Sagata, do you have a report?
I'm going to be doing a Self-Insurance Fund Executive Board Meeting on election day, November 8th. That's about it. I don't have any other reports, haven't had any meetings related to the city lately. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Myself, on October 5th, I was able to be part of the SJT group, our new Certified Public Accountants. That was October 5th, correct?
Correct.
So, we got to meet them and review. They're a new group to us, but they seem pretty on top of it. So, I was pleased to be able to be here for that. October 14th, I was also asked to attend the Rattone Public School District Facilities Master Planning Committee. They'll be meeting once a month for the next few months to discuss a variety of topics related to, you know, what they can do to proceed and make the facility better and provide the best education possible. October 16th, there was the Open House of the Welcome Center. I know Commissioner Chavez was there, and so is I, who was also there.
Right, yeah.
It was a pretty nice open house for the new tourist information center. And the renovations have proceeded nicely, and it looks pretty good. The Water Board on October 18th was canceled for this month, so the next Water Board meeting will be the third Tuesday of November. And then, October 19th was the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board, and we will be discussing items on that in the agenda later, so I'll save that for then. So, I believe that's it for reports. And we have no citizens present tonight, so we'll move on to item seven, Deliberate an Act on Approval of October 11th, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you.
One second.
It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
High five.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Well, moving on to Lodger's Tax, Deliverate an Act on Lodger's Tax Advisory Board Recommendations. And I believe Michael and you have some information there that...
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim Schuster, I did attend the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board Meeting that was held on October 19th. There were two funding requests. So, you'll see in your packet there is a memo summarizing the recommendation of the Board. The first one is the KENW FM radio advertisement. This station is out of the Portales area, and so it's like the NPR radio. This would be the third year that we would be utilizing their services for radio ads. They do work with our media manager, Patricia Duran, to develop those ads based on the various events that we have going on throughout the year. Their request is the same as it was last year, and so it's for $3,500. And just to give you an update on what that really includes is, they have several programs. They do a morning edition that's from 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m., and they would run ads for the 52 weeks. It's a one-year contract. And then, they have another program called the All Things Considered, Monday through Friday, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., and that runs 52 weeks. I guess they call it the number of credits per week, so there's five per week. And then, they also have a weekend edition program. And All Things Considered Weekend Edition. So, we would be doing the same number of ads in previous years. We do work with Desiree Markham. I don't know if you've seen some of the videos that they also do. That's not something that we pay for, but they have highlighted several local businesses and done some nice videos. There was one on Dino Cornai, Solana's Boot and Westerwear, and the Rattone Pass Inn. So, if you haven't seen those videos, I have them and can share them with you, but I think they've done a nice job for us and would recommend approval of their request.
I'll make a motion to approve the radio advertising for KENW Lodger's Tax Request for $3,500.
One second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve the Lodger's Tax Request for KENW TVs and FM radio advertising. If you're in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any further discussion that I forgot to ask for earlier? I do know there were questions about how to measure whether those ads are effective. And with all library, I think the best is just for those who get guests in the area, ask them how they found out about this. All right, moving on to the next one. The next Lodger's Tax Advisory Board Recommendation is for $4,900, sorry, to be awarded to Discovery Map International Inc. Mr. Barry is going to describe this to us.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. In your packet, you have a sample of the map from this company, Discovery Map International, that we're talking about. I had asked Joe Green to contact them and get a proposal from them for a Rattone map. And you can see on the map, it's very colorful, and it's got good information on there. It directs you to local businesses, to public facilities, and it gives you a street map of the community. And so, it's something like you're looking at in your packet. Their proposal is for $4,900, as you had mentioned, Mayor Pro Tim, for this purchase. And you do have an agreement in your packet that you would be considering. So, that's kind of the basics of this. And if I can answer any questions you have. I think it generally goes on the basis of what we see is that for the $4,900, they will map out 100 buildings or fewer. So, if I can...
And this is something we actually talked about when we first took over the tourist information center a hundred years ago. Was that you?
I think we have talked about this. There have been some other groups that have done some, you know, downtown type of maps, walking maps. We've done some different maps over the years. I think that what you find with that is if you identify businesses in there, some businesses are no longer in business, and then we have new businesses open. So, we're looking for something that is current, that would reflect businesses that we have now. This does not cost local businesses anything to be listed on this. And generally, what we're trying to do is get folks to go to the Tourist Information Center to take some interest in Rattone, especially in our downtown area, get them to come downtown, see the museum, see, you know, things at our theaters, visit our parks, and maybe spend a little time in Rattone, and then hopefully spend the night. And so, that's the intent of the map. But whatever we put on here, there's no cost to any of the other agencies or businesses involved.
And it's just the right size for a place mat.
I think, yeah, could be used as a place mat, you know, as well. We want to get these out in the community where the visitors will see that. But we thought this was a good idea. We bring it to the Commission for your consideration.
Any questions?
I just, so it looks to me like this is the design fee. It looks like as they start, then when we print it, we have to pay for printing of the maps themselves. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what I'm seeing in the contract, that we have printing free. Now, you know, I don't know that, I don't know, you know, if we're limited on being able to just reproduce this here locally. I mean, it looks like something that you could print in the office here as well. So, we'll work with the company, but yes, they're saying if we print out a bunch for you, there's a cost for that.
Thank you. I think it looks like a really neat project.
Yeah. They come in and do all the mapping. They have a professional team that knows what they're doing. Mayor, do you have any questions about the map?
Nope, looks good to me.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the Tourist Information Center Maps Agreement. It's from the Lodger's Tax Board for $4,900.
It's been moved in seconded to approve the Tourist Information Center Maps Agreement with three Lodger's Tax. All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item C, Discussion of 2023 Legislative Capital Outlay Priorities. Mr. Barry.
Mayor Commission, we are coming up on the time of year where we talk about priorities that we would like to communicate with our state delegation in advance of the Mexico Legislature convening. You have a memo in your packet, and what we're talking about here is ideas, and this is just to get the conversation going with you in regard to the city's request for capital outlay. Now, we've put some basic information in this. The state legislature will convene on January 17th. It is a 60-day session, meaning that they will consider a lot of additional legislation in addition to budget and financial issues. But the state is saying that their revenues are very strong from severance tax revenues. They're pretty well-funded. They're looking at funding capital outlay requests to a pretty high level compared to, you know, previous years. So, I have taken that into account in putting together the memo for you. And just keep in mind that the memo is, number one, it reflects generally the priorities that we set out in our Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan. That's something that the legislature asks as well. When we submit our capital outlay request, they want to know what is the ICIP number? What's the, you know, where does it lie on the priority list? So, it generally follows priorities that we have for the upcoming year. And then, it reflects the fact that the state is pretty well-funded. And we've got that information from people in the state, especially from the visitor, from the governor. And she said, "Don't be shy about what you request." Paraphrasing, you know, a quote from the governor. I'll go down the list here. It really is just to get the Commission talking about this. You've got a little time. We can't submit these until they tell us that we can submit the request. I think that will be in mid-December. So, we've got a little time to work on it. My plan is to bring this back to you during both November meetings and then have a resolution for you to adopt these requests. So, between then and now, I think the Commission can add projects to it. You can delete projects. You can talk about the scope of the project or the dollar amount in there. So, what you see in here is just something to start working from. We've listed as the number one item on here. It corresponds with our ICIP, Maloya Dam Safety Improvements. I put a number of $30 million in there that we would ask the legislature to fund. We've worked on a number of things in the engineering design for potential improvements to Lake Maloya Dam. They center on spillway improvements, spillway capacity, and outlet work improvements as well. And so, those are fairly costly items. $30 million probably does not do everything that we want to do on Lake Maloya Dam if money was not an object. But I just throw that number out there for you to think about and to talk about. And then, something we've talked about through the year, Bartlett Mesa Ranch Acquisition. I've stated in here that we would put in a funding request for $1,500,000 to complete the purchase of Bartlett Mesa Ranch and the 2,224-acre parcel that we've talked about through the year, and then have some funds left for development of park areas, too. That can improve. That can include fencing. That can include some probably remote camping facilities, not really developed, not vehicle access, but remote facility and some trail development also. Number three, something we've talked about also through the year is the Kearney Film Production Workforce Training Facility. Commissioners, you were all present there last month when Governor Louhan Grisham was in town, met us at the Kearney School Facility, looked that over with us. I think generally excited about Rattone taking this positive step in the film production industry in New Mexico. It's been successful in other places in New Mexico. We propose that this would provide workforce training for jobs in the film production industry. And of course, there's a large diverse range of jobs that can work in that business. And with the intent of really keeping some of our young talent at home, not really pushing them out and to not see them again. And so, we're excited about this. I think that my number there is something we could talk about. I would recommend that we ask for capital outlay in the amount of $10 million. And if we received that, we would have a film studio in Rattone that would be state-of-the-art, that could provide services that no other studio in New Mexico could provide. So, we're excited about that. We are, we do have some capital outlay in hand to start. Well, it's coming up, let me say. We are looking at our federal appropriation, our congressionally-directed spending request. We hope that that's funded. It's going to take some months to really figure that out, but we want to put together a major project for Rattone that would, from an economic development standpoint, advance Rattone and our efforts to create jobs and new industry and new business in Rattone.
If you don't mind, I might add that a couple of weeks ago, when Congresswoman Teresa Ledger Fernandez was here, she also mentioned that she was committed and going to try and put some energy toward that project request.
I would say that the Congresswoman did really prioritize Rattone's requests, its congressionally-directed spending requests. You know, they are very limited on the number of projects that they can carry to the House of Representatives. Congresswoman Ledger Fernandez did select the Kearney School Film Production Project in the amount of $3 million. She carried that forward. It has cleared their Budget Committee and their Appropriation Committee, and I understand is primed to go to the full House and then the Senate and hopefully be a part of next year's federal budget. I think there are some things that would happen over the next couple of months, and we'll see how that progresses. But right now, we're in a pretty good position for that federal money. I've listed public works equipment replacement in the memo. It's something that not only have we talked about in the past, but we have received capital outlay for public works equipment in the past. Of course, street improvements is something we talk about routinely. This would really support the street improvements and all of public works improvements around town, drainage included. This would be a diverse range of equipment that we would propose to upgrade from what we have now. So, we're including an industrial mower and tractor, asphalt hotbox, a multiple-tool skid steer, a culvert jetter, snow removal equipment, grapple truck, tree saw and stump grinder, industrial brush chipper, and roller compactor in that list. Half a million dollars is the recommendation from me to you. Number five, something that we've talked about, the Civic Plaza Construction. We would ask for half a million dollars in this item. We have received a $25,000 appropriation out of the last legislature, and we will be talking about that here at the Commission later tonight and then in subsequent meetings. And it's not a lot of money, 25K. So, I think to really develop a Civic Plaza the way we envisioned, I would like to see us ask for half a million dollars there. And then, drainage system improvements and reconstruction. We've talked about this, I think, since I've been at the city. We have a storm drainage system in town that is generally on the order of 75 years or older, really showing its age. As part of some of our street improvements, we have chipped away at this item and made some drainage system improvements pretty consistently, but we have a long way to go. So, I would recommend that we ask the legislature for $500,000 for drainage system improvements. If there are any questions, Mayor Pro Tim.
Any questions? Mayor, are we able to hear everything?
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. All right. No questions? That all sounds good to me? We'll move on for the next item. Deliverate an Act on Amendment Number One, Direct Youth Services J-Jack Subcontract Agreement Between City of Rattone and the Center for Community Innovation.
Mayor Commission, in your packet, we do have an amendment that we're proposing to the subcontract that was approved on July 28th. We do have monthly meetings with our current subcontractor, the Center for Community Innovation. And so, during our monthly meeting, we did review our contract, and it was brought to our attention that we probably needed to make a few minor corrections. CYFD now has an online portal, and so that's how we report all of our information, do the reimbursement requests, and also submit these surveys that are required. So, they're no longer called pre- and post-surveys. They would be called the CYFD Salesforce Surveys. And then, also in item 21 of the original contract, there was a word missing, and it was the word "groups." And so, we would just amend that item to include that wording. Other than that, all of the terms of that original subcontract would stay the same. So, we bring this to you this evening and recommend approval of Amendment Number One.
I'll make a motion to approve Amendment Number One, Direct Youth Services J-Jack Subcontract Agreement Between the City of Rattone and the Center for Community Innovation.
One second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve the Amendment Number One, Direct Youth Services J-Jack Subcontract Agreement Between the City of Rattone and CCI. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Deliverate an Act on the Aquatic Center Repairs and Maintenance Project, Change Order Number Four.
Mayor Pro Tim, Mayor and Commission, you know, if we go back a couple of years, we were really facing a lot to do at the Aquatic Center in the way of maintenance, replacement of worn components or non-functional components. And we've tackled that over a couple of phases over a couple of years. Now, throughout most of '22, we've had a project going on that really centered on mechanical systems replacement. We've done some, repaired some of those chronic leaks that we had in restrooms, showers specifically, in all of the restrooms, and upgraded some more of that. We had done a phase previously, and that was successful, so we've continued that. Also, we've worked quite extensively in the mechanical room of the Aquatic Center where we have the filtration and the chlorination systems. If you've been in that room, there's a lot going on, a lot of piping, a lot of components. It's a complicated system. And also, what we've come up with during '22 is the boiler. It just made sense to replace that. That's something that the Commission had authorized earlier. Now, I bring you Change Order Number Four to an existing contract that the city has with Mozark LLC. That's a local vendor who has been doing some of the previous work. I'll describe what is contained in Change Order Number Four, and I do bring it to you for your consideration tonight. So, number one, two items, basically, we'll talk about this. The scope of work under our existing contract will be revised The scope of work under our existing contract will be revised to allow for the removal and replacement of existing piping. This would be two-inch subloop boiler piping, and we would replace that with three-inch piping. The work will include the installation of three-inch saddles, valves, and a three-inch flow meter. The proposed cost from Mozark LLC is $9,117.58. That would include the applicable GRT. We believe that this is necessary because the two-inch piping that we're dealing with now is really not adequate for the type of flows that we have. We think that that contributed to the premature failure of our previous boiler. We have installed a new boiler, took a long time to get that boiler, so we kind of limped through the summer. The, the new boiler is in and working now, but the recommendation is that we upgrade this piping to, to, to bring the kind of water flow that we need to the boiler and hopefully avoid that premature failure from repeating itself. So you have that item, you have the cost in there. We have another item in here as well. This would be the replacement of two backwash valves that are located at the filter assembly. So we've run into this with a different filter. We replaced these valves, and recently we've had trouble with two that were remaining on a different filter. So we have a multimedia filter in there, it's controlled with these, these valves. They've been leaking for most of '22. And it's a valve that you, you really can't get parts for and just replace part of it because the company that, that made these valves originally is no longer in business. When we, when we built the Aquatic Center and opened it about 15 years ago, this was a good valve, but that company's not around anymore. We have not been able to find just parts. So we are looking at a complete replacement of these valves. They're a pretty significant component in, in what we do. There's a, of course, you have to filter the entire contents of the pool within a specified time continuously, and so they're in continuous use, and it's a pretty big volume going through there. The price that is proposed from Mozark LLC, $13,141.48. That includes the applicable GRT, all the labor, materials, miscellaneous parts that we might need. If you add both those items up, you're looking at $22,266.06. That would come from the GRT increment that is dedicated to capital improvements at the Aquatic Center.
Very good. Now, in making the motion, do we need to approve you as the signer on this?
They, they have listed the city manager as the approval. If you're okay with delegating that responsibility to me, I will do that.
I entertain the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Aquatic Center Repairs and Maintenance Project Change Order Number Four, authorizing Mr. Berry as the signature.
Thank you.
Hold on a second.
It's been moved and seconded. And are there any questions or, or concerns, comments? We've been seconded to approve the Aquatic Center Repairs and Change Order, Change Project Change Order Number Four. Mr. Berry is the signer. All those in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nope. Motion passes. All right. Item F, Deliberate an Act on Grant Agreement Between the City of Raton and the Aging and Long-Term Services for the Senior Center Commercial Dishwasher. Mr. Berry.
Mayor Protem, Mayor, Commission, the city recently learned about a funding opportunity through Aging and Long-Term Services that generally would be described as a capital improvement, that would be a lower dollar amount, generally less than $10,000. And it's pretty quick money. There is an appropriation, and you see this in the grant agreement for emergency requests to plan, designate, renovate, improve, equip, and furnish the Raton Senior Center in Colfax County. And this was the need, is a industrial type of dishwasher. Michael Ann has gone through the process here. We do have a price for the dishwasher that's needed, $6,349. That is the appropriation in the grant agreement. And so Aging and Long-Term Services would, would fund City of Raton for that. Of course, you remember that the building is owned by the City of Raton. We generally work with the, the seniors group on, on building related improvements, and so this would fall into that category. So we bring a grant agreement to you for your consideration.
Clean dishes are pretty important.
I'll make a motion to approve the grant agreement between the City of Raton and Aging and Long-Term Services for the $6,349.
Hold on a second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the grant agreement between the City of Raton and Aging and Long-Term Services for the Senior Center Commercial Dishwasher. Any comments or concerns? All those in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Very good. Motion passes. All right. Now, I think we've had a request to postpone item, both items G and H. G is Raton Civic Plaza Grant Agreement between the City of Raton and the Department of Finance Administration. Do we need to vote on these separately? Can we?
I, I think we probably do need to vote on them separately.
Okay. So can I have a motion to, or does anybody have a question on why they're postponing? That can be explained easily?
Yeah, and I'll go ahead and talk about that a little bit. We did, you know, how, the funding for Raton Civic Plaza under this grant agreement is capital outlay from the '22 legislative session. It's in the amount of $25,000 specified for improvements to Raton Civic Plaza. That generally is the area of the Al Portel, we call the Al Portel half a block. We did anticipate getting that grant agreement from the Mexico Department of Finance Administration. How it works is the state will generally fund these type of appropriations with the sale of bonds that are backed up by severance tax. And the bond sales really have not happened until recently. I think they're, they're really still working on getting the funding for this particular one, and, and I think that the bond sales probably has happened, but it's after that that we get the grant agreement from the state, and we can't move on that until those things happen. Also, the, the, there was an appropriation for Kearney School, it's in the same boat, and that bond sale has not happened yet. It'll happen later. We did get a questionnaire from DFA, so we'll bring both of those things back to you in subsequent meetings.
So I believe this one, we're, we're not going to put a date on.
We, we don't know for sure when we'll get either one, and so, yeah, we really can't put a date on it. I think it's fair to say that between now and the end of the calendar year, we'll, we'll, we'll have both of them. We'll probably have this grant agreement at the next meeting, but it's out of our control.
Right. So I'll entertain a motion to postpone item G.
I'll make a, I'll make that motion until the, for the, postpone the Raton Civic Plaza Grant Agreement, until which time the funds or the grant agreement is actually available.
Commissioner John Coates, hold on a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Second.
Okay.
Hold on a second here. There'll be two of us.
Mayor, I might, I might remind you that even though you're on the phone, you can move one second items. So, but it's been moved and seconded to postpone item G for the Raton Civic Plaza Agreement Number G2796 between the City of Raton and the Department of Finance Administration until that funding is available from them. All those in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
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 Thank you. All, motion passes. Item A, she's also, we need to postpone that item, and that's Resolution 2022-53, authorizing the certification of the City of Raton's capital asset inventory. That's my question.
I think, I think my comment, Mayor Protem, is that we have had a lot of, of capital improvements during the past year, and this is a complicated process, and adding everything to the inventory that has been added during the year is challenging. And so that's something that, that Michael Ann is, is working on. It's a, it's a big job because there's just so much out there, so much is going on. We've talked about generally all the projects that we've had through '22, and they're in various phases now, but, yeah, it's a pretty significant challenge there.
So this one, I believe, we're probably postponing till one of the November meetings, possibly, or do you want to go about later?
Yes, I would like to bring this back for the first meeting in November. The auditors were here last week. We have not scheduled any subsequent dates for them to return, but this is a key component of our audit that we need to have prepared and ready for them when they do return. So it's definitely something that I need to prioritize so that the auditors will have the adequate information for this year's audit.
Sure. Any questions regarding this?
I'll make a motion to postpone Resolution 2022-53 until the November 8th city commission meeting.
Hold on a second.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded to postpone Resolution Number 2022-54 until the November 8th meeting. All those in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you. Deliberate an Act on Resolution 2022-54 Extending NMDOT Cooperative Agreement Control. I think I just gave you the wrong number, but from the last one, I combined 53 and 54. So, for item 22, 2022-54, extending the NMDOT Cooperative Agreement to the City of Raton. Mr. Berry.
Mayor Protem, this has to do with a cooperative agreement, a grant agreement with the Mexico Department of Transportation and between them and the City of Raton. This would be for the resurfacing of West Colfax Avenue, and the last time we said we hoped to get that paved in, in short order and close this project out. And I still hope that we get this paved in short order and we get it closed out. The grant agreement has a December 31st, 2022 expiration date on it, and we are working with the contractor to try to get the work done, but I'm not 100% sure that we're going to meet that deadline. And so we are going to go ahead and ask DOT for an extension. That would be for a year, December 31st of 2023. That would require your consideration for Resolution 2022-54. That would give us a year to complete the project. It's my intention to complete it as, as soon as we can, within the next few weeks. Fluid situation. Hold on a second.
Very good. Any questions or comments?
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2022-54 Extending NMDOT Cooperative Agreement Control Number L40554.
Hold on a second. It's been moved and seconded to extend the Agreement 2022-54. All those in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
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 Motion passes. All right. Deliberate an Act on Resolution 2022-55, Approval of FY23 First Quarter Financial Report.
Mayor, Commission, in your packet this evening, we do have our first quarter financial report. You'll see on our general fund summary that as of September 30th, the ending cash balance in the general fund, less the required 1/12 reserve, is $3,237,14689. I've also listed for you the balances in the various other funds. We did receive the October GRT distribution, and we are still 12.97% above the general fund budget projection. So as we've talked in the past, going into the winter months, we're doing quite well considering that we actually did budget an increase for this fiscal year, and we're still kind of trending above that projection. But as we know, going into the winter months, the GRT will kind of start to stabilize. However, we do believe that with the online holiday sales, that November, December will be pretty good months for the GRT as well, despite less construction. The lodgers' tax revenues year-to-date for the first quarter were down 8.22% compared to the previous fiscal year. I think there's several factors going on there. I mean, last fiscal year, we were coming out of the COVID, people were really traveling, gas prices were pretty reasonable at that time. I think this probably is a little bit more of an effect of a little less travel due to the impact of the high gas prices. But nonetheless, we still are doing quite well in the lodgers' tax, and I think we will, in the fiscal year, not quite as high as last year, but probably still higher than the previous four years, so. The cannabis excise tax, I have prepared, and you'll see in your packet, we do have a spreadsheet that we're tracking those new revenues. I've noted in the report that, you know, consistently for the, the past several months, we're seeing about $4,000 per month. During the fiscal year '23 budget process, the municipalities were told by the Department of Finance not to budget the cannabis revenue and to submit a budget adjustment utilizing this first quarter data. So you'll probably see at our next meeting, I'll be bringing a budget adjustment and use this kind of as my justification for that adjustment to DFA. Also, the revenue from the cannabis excise tax could potentially increase if there are additional retail shops opening during the fiscal year, so we could possibly see additional budget adjustments later on. But for right now, we're basing it off of this quarterly data that we've collected. In addition to the cannabis excise tax, there is also grocery receipts tax. I think we've talked about this before. It is figured on the total sales price, including the excise tax amount. So I've provided an example there for you. $100 of cannabis plus the 12% excise tax times the city's GRT comes up to the grocery receipts of $9.39 for a total sale amount of $121.39, including the excise tax and the GRT. The only bad thing is the GRT activity is not separately captured in the grocery receipts report that we receive from the state. So they currently have a industry tab or a code that appears in the retail sector as a miscellaneous retailer. So it's really kind of hard to extrapolate that information and know how much of the retail is specific to the cannabis or the GRT for those businesses. But I just thought I would kind of bring that to your attention. And then also, medical cannabis sales are not subject to the excise tax, and they're deductible from GRT. So, you know, we'll continue to track that. I've also included in your packet the gas tax comparison report. We did receive the October distribution, so for the first four months of the fiscal year, we are down compared to the previous fiscal year, but once again, I think that's just because consumption is down. So I've also provided for you in your packet the grocery receipts tax report, and as I mentioned, we are 12.97%. And as I mentioned, we are 12.97% above our general fund budget projection. I will be submitting this report to DFA. It is due before October 31st. As City Manager Berry stated earlier, we are kind of in the process of closing a lot of grants and projects. And so hopefully, you know, we'll be working with the Federal Highways Administration to close out the depot grant. We're currently in the process of closing out the CDBG grant. Both of those are, you know, pretty big projects for us, and it'd be kind of nice to get those closed out. We're also still working on the Airport Hangar project. So we've got some reimbursement requests out there for that. So we'll probably, what I'm hoping, as we've discussed previously, is we had transferred a lot of funds out of the general fund to kind of cash flow these larger projects. So once we get these closed out, we'll be able to move those funds back into the general fund. So I'll be working on that as well. Is there any questions that anybody has about the financials?
They were really well done, and I appreciate all the extra breaks up, break out of the cannabis, the lodgers' tax, and the gas tax. There was one tiny typo on the fifth line down on the report. I don't know if you saw the, of the line down on the big, on the paragraph.
Or my general fund.
Yeah. It just says revenue would be up, down slightly. And I think we just want up and not down there. I don't know how they both like choose one or the other, but yeah.
Oh, yeah.
My brain kept going back and forth like which one? And then, yeah.
I think it's, we were optimistic that it would be up.
Up, yep.
So, sorry for that.
No, no, the reports are always excellent. I just happened to spot that in there.
That was my intention. So if there's no further questions, I would recommend approval of the Resolution 2022-55. And then also, before we leave this evening, I would need everybody's signature to submit that with my DFA report.
I'm making a motion to approve Resolution 2022-54.
I think it's 55.
Resolution 2022-55, that's pretty well the FY23 First Quarter Financial Report.
A second. It's been moved in seconded to approve Resolution 2022-55 for the First Quarter Financial Report of this quarter 2020. All those in favor, vote by the side of aye. 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 There are no opposed and motion passes. Thank you. Are we losing you there? You're, you are a little bit sketchy there.
Still here.
There you are. Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on. Item K, Resolution, deliberate an act on Resolution 2022-56, Budget Adjustment Number Four for Fiscal Year '23.
Mayor Commission, I did have this in your packet, but I have also provided you with a revised budget adjustment. Just prior to the meeting, I had received an invoice for the quarterly insurance deductible payments from the self-insurer's fund. And so I wanted to add a line item adjustment for the police department for those liability quarterly deductible premiums. So other than that, I have not made any other changes. So you'll see, we just have some line item adjustments in the municipal court for hardware software. And then also, under the fire grants, we've received some reimbursements from the state forestry for the wildland fires. And so I would just like to allocate those revenues to some line items within our fire grant funds. And then in the fire fund, just a line item adjustment there as well. Let's see. Excuse me. And then in the Capital Projects Fund, for some reason, I under-budgeted our GRT revenue for the pool slash rec center GRT. So that's a good thing since we're utilizing that as a source for these repairs of the aquatic center. But yeah, as of the first quarter, we were 12.18% above budget. So I would be adjusting that along with the corresponding admin fees for the GRT. Also, we did approve the new dishwasher for the senior center. So I would just be adding those two new line items to the budget for the $6,349. And then some, at the previous meeting, we did approve the green waste grinding services, and that was the bid from Rocky Top Resources. So I was going to add that to the budget. And then also just some line item adjustments for the trust and agency to account for the donations that we did collect from the fireworks show in July. And those funds would be used towards next year's fireworks show. Is there any questions?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-56, Budget Adjustment Number Four for Fiscal Year '23.
A second.
It's been moved and double-seconded to approve Resolution Number 2022-56, FY22-56, Adjustment Number Four. All those in favor, vote by the side of aye. Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We're moving right along, not as fast as we wanted to. That's, we're moving. Deliberate an act on Resolution 2022-57, conserving disposal of RPS surplus property. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Potem, Mayor Commission, this is RPS capital assets. There are three vehicles on here. The resolution pretty well explains what the, what the plan is for the vehicles. There is a 1997 Ford F-150. We actually could use this in public works. So RPS agrees to transfer the 1997 Ford pickup to City of Rattone Public Works Department. Then there are two vehicles that will be sold. There, there's 2000 Chevy S10 pickup and a 2006 Chevy Colorado, both in poor condition, not something that we can use. Those will be put up for sale by a competitive process, as is, and no warranty likely for salvage. So by your consideration of the resolution, we would be able to proceed with deleting the equipment from the fixed asset inventory.
Any questions regarding the disposal of surplus properties? In case I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to adopt Resolution 2022-57 regarding the surplus property disposal from RPS.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2022-57, conserving the disposal of RPS surplus property. All those in favor, vote by the side of aye. Aye.
Aye.
There are no opposed, so the motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Berry, I just saw you writing that City Manager was reporting, so.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. I have the City Manager report for you. I did attend a meeting that was requested by New Mexico Main Street. This would be a discussion of the Rattone Main Street, generally talking about their accreditation process. It's something that we do annually. Not a lot of drama there. Rattone Main Street is accredited again for another year. They're really a, a high performer in New Mexico Main Street community and then really nationally recognized. And we, we discussed just what a productive relationship we have with Rattone Main Street, New Mexico Main Street too. As far as the city's contribution, we talked about projects that we continue to work on in the downtown Rattone area. There's quite a list of those things. Of course, I think the highlight of that is the renovation of the Rattone Train Depot, which, with the, with the funding support of New Mexico Main Street. So good meeting there. Rattone Main Street will be appreciated to continue on with this good work. Myself and the Mayor Potem did meet with Congresswoman Teresa Ledger-Fernandez on October 15th. And then subsequently, I met with her staff along with Mayor Sagata on October 21st. Generally, we discussed action that we would request help from, from the Congresswoman's office in getting a determination from the U.S. Department of Treasury to authorize the use of new market tax credits in the downtown Rattone Business District. This would be applicable to various building rehabilitations. And so we've got that discussion going. I attended the New Mexico Watershed and Dam Owners Alliance, their annual conference held in Albuquerque. Over a couple of days, we discussed current engineering practices in regard to dams. And also, I had a chance to sit down with Senator Pete Campos and talk about the upcoming legislative session and discuss what's on Rattone's mind as far as projects, issues, and what we see important to, to, to the legislature. I attended this morning a pre-construction meeting at Lake Malloya Dam. This is for some work, maintenance work that's being performed on the primary spillway. We should complete the work here this week. I would notify the public that there would be construction equipment on the, the highway, on the roadway, on the top of the dam. And so there's some traffic limitations for cars crossing the dam. But contractors off to a good start, and we would wrap that up here with good weather this week. Commissioner Jacomo had, had talked about the photovoltaic project in his report from the RPS meeting. We are continuing environmental assessment of the site. The site that we have in mind is on the old La Mesa Airfield site that's owned by Colfax County. I met with the county manager, Monty Gore, and the chairman, Roy Fernandez, to give them an update on where we're at. And I stated to them that we intend to attend their next meeting and ask for their provision of 10 acres for the project to the City of Rattone. And I think we're all agreeable about that. We'll talk about the process. I think it would require approval of DFA or possibly even the State Board of Finance. So we'll work on that, complete the environmental work, complete some surveying work, complete some geotechnical work, and we should see construction coming after, after all of those things are done. So keep you posted on that. We've worked, we put a lot of effort into our brownfields program in Rattone. That's one of the tools that we're looking at to help us clean up some of our dilapidated properties. We've had a good relationship with the state program that is run through the New Mexico Environment Department. There will be representatives of NMED in town on November 2nd to look at specific things with Rattone's program, but they've been really helpful to us. I would mention that we will submit a request for federal funds through their brownfield program to U.S. EPA in early November. Lastly, I would report to the Commission that I have been, had a conversation with our librarian, Thayla Wright. She's informed me that she intends to retire in late November. That's after, I believe, 28 years of service at the Rattone Library. Mayor Potem and Commission, we have posted the library director's position. That's out there on the city website, or you can get information here at, at City Hall. We will recognize Thayla for her years of contribution. Had a later meeting too, and we get a little closer, but did want to notify you that the job posting is out there, and that's all I have, Mayor Potem.
Thank you. Well, she's, she's very upset. All right, any additional comments? Mayor, do you have anything else to add?
Nothing.
All right. I might just say, everybody should have a safe and happy Halloween, and don't forget to brush your teeth after all that candy. Opposition? I believe this meeting is adjourned.